Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council. This is a special meeting for Monday, May 17th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Hershey? Councilmember Colasetti?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Here.
Councilmember Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the February 10th, 2025 city council meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Are any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Move on to presentations and public input. We do have a presentation scheduled tonight by the UIUC environmental leadership students. We'll take that first, and then we'll move on to general public input. And those who are planning to speak should come up to the table here. So welcome, and make sure your microphones are on. The green light should be on. Pull them close to your, to speak, and please introduce yourself, and you'll have 10 minutes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name is Yasenia Adrianson.
I'm Elise Koch.
Hi, my name is Himena Martinez.
Well, hello, council. Good evening. We are here to express our strong support for the current initiative to implement a plastic bag tax in the city of Urbana. Based on the serious health and environmental impacts of plastic waste, and any movement towards a plastic-free future is exciting to see. For the past couple of weeks, our team and I have researched the negative health impacts plastics have on humans with the Beyond Plastic Movement, a nationwide organization fighting for plastic ordinances across the country. They are arguing for a framework banning plastic straws, straws, balloons, plastic bags, and polystyrene. They built up traction in various cities like Chicago. Tonight, we want to highlight the critical health and environmental concerns caused by plastic pollution and explain why Urbana must take action moving forward with this bag tax. It is a crucial first step towards protecting both public health and our local environment.
The dangers of plastic pollution are well documented but often overlooked. Plastic is a human-made material, and it's only been around for around a century, yet every piece ever produced still exists today. Unlike organic materials, it doesn't decompose. It simply breaks into smaller and smaller pieces, becoming micro and nanoplastics. These tiny plastic fragments are now everywhere. They have been found at the highest peaks of Mount Everest, in the deepest parts of the ocean, and alarmingly inside the human body. Microplastics have been detected in human lungs, blood, breast milk, and even in developing fetuses.
But the real concern isn't just plastic itself. It's what it carries with it. Dr. Philip Lardingham from Boston University explains, as plastics break down, they leach toxic chemicals that make their way into our bodies. Many of these chemicals are known as carcinogens linked to increased risk, increased risk of breast, prostate, and testicular cancers. Other interference with our hormones disrupting the endocrine system and contributing to infertility, obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. The impact isn't just physical, it's neurological. Studies have shown that early exposure to plastic chemicals can affect brain development, leading to lower IQs, attention disorders like ADHD, and even increased autism risk.
And beyond human health, plastic pollution is devastating as well to the environment. Wildlife mistakes plastic for food, leaving to starvation and poisoning. Plastics clog our waterways, pollute our soil, and release harmful chemicals into our air and water.
By seeking to reduce plastic bag consumption with this tax, tax, Urbana is showing awareness of the dangers of plastic pollution and their dedication to phasing it out. Some people might argue that there are equity concerns with the bag tax, but the costs to consumers are minimal. A study done by Mountain True in North Carolina showed that consumers paid an annual total of $3.33 when a 10-cent tax was put on bags.
This is a real opportunity to take meaningful action in reducing single-use plastic waste in Urbana. Your constituents care deeply about human and environmental health and, and want this to see reflected in those, in the cities, I'm sorry, let me, and your constituents care deeply about human and environmental health and want to see your city reflect those values. We recognize that the council has agreed to, on increasing the current recycling tax rate with a tax on plastic bags as a funding mechanism.
We ask, we ask now that you direct city staff to develop the necessary policy to ensure this change is put into action effectively. We, we urge you to move forward with this implementation and demonstrate that Urbana is ready to take the necessary steps toward, towards a cleaner and healthier future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We do have time for some questions. If anyone has questions for the students. The city's committed to the plastic bag tax, and it will happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We'll move on to. And we'll move on to regular public input. Does anyone wish to address the council? You have five minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Is it on?
Yes, it's on.
My name is Robert Michael Doyle. Family and friends know me as Mike or Michael Doyle. I have been speaking off and on before this council since the time of Mayor Markland, the last Republican mayor of Urbana, and a very good man. I speak most often about gay issues. I'm a longtime gay activist. I'm here tonight to remind you of your 50th anniversary, which I hope you are making plans to celebrate. 1975, before I was out and involved with gay politics, this council passed the first gay rights legislation in the state of Illinois, long before the state did it, or the United States government did anything. It was prohibited discrimination on the basis of sexual preference, which means the same thing legally as sexual orientation, mainly in housing, is my memory, of, on the basis that no one should be discriminated on, for their sexual preference or orientation. After coming out, becoming the male co-president of what then became Gay Alliance, originally started as Gay Students Alliance, but was getting itself organized as the second openly gay organization in town in 1975, so it wasn't involved with this council at that time. In 1977, I participated and was instrumental in getting the city of Champaign to pass the Human Rights Ordinance, which is still in effect. In both cities, you have almost identical human rights ordinances. And that ordinance covered a whole range of categories. I think about 16. And it was the first ordinance, of course, the second after you, to protect pieces on the, people on the basis of sexual orientation. First ordinance in the state to protect on the basis of gender identity. The language was somewhat archaic and has, by my understanding, been modernized by both cities since then. As a result, Champaign was first in the state and third or fourth in the nation to protect on the basis of gender identity. At that time, and maybe it is still true, when one city did something, it immediately came up in the other, next, the other city. And so, under Jeffrey Markland and the council at that time, and I appeared then before you to argue on behalf of that ordinance, this council passed your own ordinance that matched Champaign's almost word for word. I considered that the high point of my life, my contribution to the general public, to the community. And I did many things since then that I'm equally proud of, but that was, I think, my best effort for anything. So I'm hoping that this city is already planning some celebration this year of your 50th anniversary of doing something really good. And if not, get busy. Another way to fight the imposition of fascism at the federal level is to celebrate things that the fascists hate, as well as, of course, passive resistance, nonviolent passive resistance. Anyway, I am planning a celebration of my own 50th anniversary of coming out as a gay person. It will be April 9th, a Wednesday, in downtown Champaign in Quality Bar, which is right across from the Champaign City Building on the northeast corner of Neal and Chester. Some old timers will know that building as one of two lock, stock, and bagel places ages ago. Both, of course, are gone. All, I will be providing free finger food and chilled bottled water. The bar will be open to the general public. There will be a cash bar. I do not normally buy alcohol for anyone else. I do drink myself. I hope all gay and gay-friendly people of whatever category, but friendly, are invited to attend, whether they know me or not, or care about me or not. Goodbye. Thank you for your time. And I'm sorry, but I am leaving.
Happy anniversary, and we'll be there.
I'll hold you to that.
I'll be there.
Hi, city of Urbana council members. I'm Madison, undergraduate student researcher at the Community Data Clinic. I'm here to read a letter on behalf of Dr. Anita Chan to voice her continued support of the proposed ordinance surrounding surveillance technology. The order, the proposed ordinance remains a common sense proposal for promoting transparency and protecting civil rights and civil liberties and due process while also balancing city authorities and police departments' public safety interests with respect to new technologies. Since the ordinance discussion before January 2025, a city council meeting, new questions have arisen over how to define surveillance technology, with some parties specifying that the ordinance should be limited to define surveillance tech as equipment that specifying, specifies in the ordinance that does not require manual operation, others specifying that it should be defined as devices that identify particular people and others focusing on its capturing data of all people suspected or not of a crime. Surveillance technologies is a broad concept. They could be any of the products and services discussed above and include others used to detect, monitor, intercept, collect, exploit, preserve, process, analyze, invasively observe, and/or retain sensitive data, personally identifying information, including biomarkers or communications concerning individuals or groups. What is key is that all forms of surveillance technologies entail systems that are complex by nature, and they all entail powerful and inherently expensive capacities that commonly defy and exceed the average resident's expectations of policing in public space in ways that immediately complicate due process rights. The ordinance is a common sense approach to prevent abuses and to, and, and to reaffirm the city's commitment to good government and accountability principles. It recognizes the needs for city authorities and police departments to involve their uses of technology while underscoring the oversight process as an opportunity to inform the public and its considerations for new technology contracts, specify measures taken to prevent and minimize adverse impacts, and invite city and council input on benefit risk and cost benefit analysis. Further, it underscores the public value of an annual assessment process to ensure the legal compliance and product efficacy, given dynamically changing systems and use contexts. Cities across the country have passed similar, similar measures that demonstrate that they do create a blanket stop on city authorities from obtaining new surveillance technologies. From Madison and Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Minnesota, San Jose, Boston, among others, dozens of cities across the US, various, of various sizes and regions have passed measures that require city council approval for the acquisition of new surveillance technologies. In cities like Madison and Milwaukee, Wisconsin, they were further reported in 2024, a 40% and 39% drop in homicides respectively, while Madison was recently recognized for, for a national, for being a national leader, leader in traffic and road safety by the AAA Foundation, and was touted for its results for its safer community network. A public approval process for the acquisition and use of surveillance technologies that involve the city council and the public is a sensible approach to balancing public safety interests while safeguarding already known risks to civil rights and civil liberties that today's powerful surveillance technology systems inherently entail. These technologies can be used lawfully and legitimately with appropriate safeguards. Responsibly using surveillance technologies, however, means improving safety while working to protect the rule of law and to prevent and mitigate the risk growing of, to public, to the public. This, this proposed ordinance works to do that, and thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Okay, we'll move on to council input and communications. Grace?
Thank you. Wanted to thank those who came out tonight. Appreciate the presentation from the environmental leadership group. Feel free to follow along and be in touch with how that implementation goes, and also appreciate input from the Community Data Clinic. And I don't know if you or maybe Dr. Chan can send us an email of your input. That would also be appreciated. And did want to give an update on the ordinance. I also appreciate all the people who have worked on it so far and reviewed the proposal. And I'm thinking that we would benefit from taking some more time to learn about the current proposal and some other existing ordinances, to have accurate information on what surveillance technology is currently in use, hear from some experts, get more community input and awareness, and transition to new city leadership. It's been a struggle working with some of the current leadership in a process that I found not particularly collaborative. I do want to keep the momentum going on this. I think in the meantime, we can have some staff research on the ordinance and what would apply in Urbana, hear from experts, and continue to research and discuss among council and community. So this ordinance would, is planned to be back in Cow, April 7th, I believe, and I hope that council and staff members continue to consider it in that time. And at that time, we may also want to consider taking an even longer pause to have some in-depth research and experience some new changes and come back to it. That's all. Thank you.
Any other council communication? I can assure you that staff is continuing to research this ordinance and, and look into the versions that have been presented, and we will look forward to continuing discussion on April 7th. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. There are none committee of the whole. This is two items from the regular agenda that are brought forth from the committee meeting on March 3rd, and this would be Councilmember Evans, who is the chair.
Thank you. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I would like to submit a motion for approval, ordinance number 2025-03-007, an ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number six, omnibus.
Second.
So that's moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? And we do have Finance Director Elizabeth Hanon here. And I understand James Quisenberry is now on the line. Is that right, James? Okay. This amendment will require six out of eight votes, and the mayor votes on this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
Could someone check with Burima to make sure he's got James on the line? Next, go ahead, Chris.
Yep. Next, I would like to motion approval ordinance number 2025-03-008, an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $9 million general obligation bonds, series 2025.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
No.
Councilmember Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Quisenberry?
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees, I believe there are none, reports of officers. With no further business before this special city council meeting, we stand adjourned. And this will be followed by a special meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. Are we ready? Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. This is a special meeting for Monday, March 17th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Here.
Trustee Evans?
Here.
Trustee Hershey? Trustee Colasetti?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Trustee Wilkin?
Here.
Trustee Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Supervisor Chinowith? Assessor Owana?
Please, please let us know who, who you're representing and who you are. Yeah. There we go. Shayla Kenyon-Bathsbriggs, Deputy Supervisor for Cunningham Township.
Seeing no public participation, we have one item on the agenda, and this is approval of the annual township board meeting agenda for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Are you making a presentation?
No, actually. So the town clerk prepares the annual town agenda and handles starting up the annual town meeting each year. So our duty tonight is a statutory one. It is just to approve the agenda for the annual town meeting. We received no submissions from the electorate to add additional items of business, so there are a standard number of items of business, including approving the minutes of the prior year, electing a moderator, because it is not actually a meeting of the town board. town board, so there is not a chair. It is a meeting of the electorate, so that is registered voters of the township who are physically in attendance at the meeting. Every township in the state of Illinois has an annual town meeting at the exact same time on the second Tuesday in April every year. The supervisor did add one item of business that is different than last year, which is the resolution TA 2025-001R, a resolution to delegate authority to the township board to purchase, sell, and lease property. A copy of that resolution has been prepared by the township attorney and was emailed to the board earlier. I do have copies. We are not approving that resolution as a town board. That is a resolution that will go before the electorate for their approval. Tonight, we are just approving the agenda so that it may be advertised in the paper and published in three prominent locations within the township, which is City Hall, the Urbana Free Library, and at the Cunningham Township office. They will be published for not less than 15 days ahead of the meeting on April 8th. If you have any questions about the agenda, I'm happy to help assist.
Mary Alice.
So, Darcy, I've been reading through six ILCS on the township code, trying to understand a little bit better about the delegation of the authority to the township board to purchase, sell, and lease property. I don't recall us having to do this in the past, so I'm wanting to know what changed.
So this is not, there is never a time that this is necessarily required, right? This is an option that is available to townships. To my knowledge, Cunningham Township has not done this, but in 2022, I was able to confirm that the City of Champaign Township did this in September when they purchased the Times Shelter. So they called a special meeting of the electorate, similar to our annual meeting in April, but we can always call additional ones, and they called it the same evening that they scheduled a special town board meeting. As I understand it, and I am not an attorney, so please take this for what it is, what I have gleaned from reading the minutes of both of those meetings and seeing the agendas and reading the memo prepared by the then Township Supervisor Andy Cornstrom. The purpose of this is it is asking the electorate to basically grant permission to the town board to purchase property with as little as just a resolution. So the purchase is still done via a resolution and a public vote in a regular meeting, but traditionally, when a unit of government purchases, sells, or leases property, there is like a public hearing process that is, that causes it to be staggered because there are certain noticing requirements needed to advertise public hearings ahead of time. What I saw with the City of Champaign Township is they had their meetings on the same night because this special permission from the electorate allowed them to do it on an expedited timeline. So they had their special meeting where the electorate passed a resolution of the exact same title and very similar text. The difference is their resolution explicitly identified the Times Shelter property on Washington in Champaign and included a specific dollar amount. And then after that passed at that meeting, they adjourned it and called to order a special meeting where there was a resolution advertised to the public granting the township board permission to purchase that specific property, and they provided like the assessment report, et cetera. As I understand, this resolution, it would grant similar authority to the town board not to exceed 12 months. So this would, if the electorate adopted it, would grant the township board authority to at a meeting that they advertise not less than the 48 hours required by the Open Meetings Act to have a resolution on there to purchase, sell, or lease property without the additional requirement of a public hearing. So it serves, as I understand it, to expedite the process of acquiring or selling property, but it is certainly still done publicly, and it requires the public's permission to remove the public hearing portion.
So I guess my, my big question, so this is purchasing or leasing property, and we lease property from Lincoln Square. Every year we sign a lease as a township board for the assessor's office. Does that mean that we were doing that incorrectly?
I believe we had a public hearing the first time we signed the lease, and then subsequently we were just renewing the existing lease, so it wasn't new?
Okay. I guess right now, as it is written, it says that the town board can basically do whatever procedure they want, you know, in a nutshell, in legalese. And I guess my only concern would be, one thing that I think frustrates the public sometimes is if something has come to the attention of the public and then it's voted on the same day, and there's no like time for the public to process something. So that, to me, is concerning. I realize that we don't vote on the resolution, I get that, but we are voting on whether or not it should be added to the, to the meeting. Can the electors choose to amend it? I don't know how that works in it.
Yes, the electors, as I understand it, will have the authority to amend this and also have the authority to reject it as well, because the electors are the deciding board too, for this resolution.
So in other words, if this doesn't pass, then basically a public hearing is mandated before township can purchase or lease something, is that correct?
Correct. The standard procurement requirements in place for all units of government in relation to property would be in full effect if the electorate did not adopt this resolution at the annual town meeting, or if the town board felt concerns about this being on the agenda.
Any other comments? Jaya.
Well, I think one thing in terms of being very similar to Champaign Township, it still says Champaign Township in one place, within the first whereas, so at the very least, that needs to be changed to Cunningham Township. I will say, I don't love that this is getting to us though last minute, and Darcy, thank you so much for trying to explain it. I think that's good information, but certainly would have been nice to hear from the township attorney tonight, too.
Grace.
And the council just clarify that as a town board, we're not having any input or accepting or rejecting of the resolution itself at this time, is that right?
So that is an area that I actually am not completely clear on, I will be honest. As I understand it, the role of the town board this evening is simply to approve the agenda. There are certain portions of the agenda that I know for a fact cannot be edited that are just boilerplate, they have to be on there. This resolution was placed on the agenda at the request of the supervisor. Whether that is with the consent of the town board or not is something that I unfortunately do not have complete clarity on, I apologize.
Mary Alice.
So as I understand it, what you're saying is, is that we have to, we have to either approve or not approve the entire agenda, and we don't have the ability to pull something from the agenda, is that correct?
So we have to approve the agenda, that is not an option. We have to approve a version of the agenda, to clarify, because we have certain time requirements that we are bound by in terms of noticing to ensure that the public is duly informed. But I am not clear on if the town board is able to remove that resolution. I was hoping to have legal representation and/or more confirmation from the supervisor's office, however, I would, I would think that it would be something that the town board would have the authority to say yea or nay on.
So hypothetically, if, if somebody asks to pull it off of the agenda, does township have the ability to call a special meeting just specifically for that resolution?
So that specific resolution is not something that would necessarily, so outside of it appearing on the agenda, it is not something that would be for consideration of the town board as a standalone item?
I apologize, electorate.
Yes, but the electorate absolutely can have a special meeting at another time to consider that resolution, which is exactly what City of Champaign Township did in September of 2022. So it is not a necessity that it does appear at the annual town meeting. I think the intent was, we already have a meeting of the electorate rather than have the additional advertising. I think that was the intent, but...
Were there other comments? Chandra, did I see your hand?
I was just gonna offer a motion, I guess, since it is just our, our duty to approve or disprove the agenda, not the contents of it-ish. If, if, if discussion was more or less wrapped up.
So is that a motion to approve the agenda from trustee Bishop?
Yes.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mary Alice.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the, the item off of the agenda for the resolution number TA 2025-001, a resolution to delegate authority to the township board to purchase, sell, and lease property.
So is that a friendly amendment?
That, well, I, I'm happy to make it a friendly amendment.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda.
Yeah, the person who made the original amendment would be the one to friendly amend it, right? You can't make a friendly amendment, you can make a new amendment.
Okay, new amendment then.
All right, it's a new amendment. So the motion on the floor is to remove the resolution.
Waiting for a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. We'll take one at a time, so we'll take the amendment first, is there?
Can we have discussion? We haven't had discussion on that.
Can I ask for discussion? Yes, is there discussion on this amendment? Grace.
Thank you. I'm in favor of keeping it. I think it's up to the electorate here. I do think that some more information would be helpful. I agree that having attorneys, having the full supervisor, and I think Shayla, if any point, if you want to jump in, I think that ultimately not being our decision to make up to the electorate, so I think it's important that it gets posed there. But I do think it would be helpful for the electorate to have that information. I think that the goal here is for ease of property acquisition or use for the betterment of the goals of the township, and I think it's maybe not entirely clear here, so I think some more context for the electorate would be good, but I think ultimately it's up for them to decide that. I think if it were up to town board, I think that adding some wording like that could be helpful. Right now, it just says, you know, any manner deemed necessary seems a little wide. I do think that it would be wise if the electorate wanted to go that way, to even just add some language, you know, in line with serving, you know, the populations served by the township, something along that line, just kind of specifying what is the goal in this preauthorization kind of thing. Why is it important to, what would be the benefits of skipping that public hearing? So I think more information for the electorate on April 8th would be helpful, and again, I think it's important to at least pose the question to the electorate.
Jaya.
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot of what you just said, Grace, but I also think that we're left to assume, and I don't feel comfortable with that. I think, you know, having caught one very glaring obvious error in what was sent to us at 4:37 this afternoon, I don't feel comfortable approving something that I don't know what it is. And so I think likely that if this came to us with more information, I'd be 100% on board. I think even exploring is their way to provide a second notice to clarify to the electorate that there will be another component that they can vote on, even if it's not officially part of that town board meeting, like if it could be piggybacked right afterwards. But the public also hasn't seen this, so, you know, yes, it should be the decision of the electorate. That's one of the things I love about the township structure, but in saying I'm good with something being on the agenda, I don't know what it is, so I don't feel like I can vote on it in good faith. I don't, don't feel comfortable with that. So I hope to see more information and clarity and the revision for at least that one error so that we can put this in front of the electorate, but I don't feel comfortable doing so now.
Any discussion? Jaya, or Shayya.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for even considering this, and I do want to apologize for there being an error. Unfortunately, I'm not as abreast as I wish I was, but I do know the intent, and it is for obtaining more property, more land, more anything, in order to serve our constituents here in Cunningham Township, so that's at the heart of it. And I just want to apologize, but thank you for even considering, but I do agree that there needs to be more discussion because I am a constituent myself.
Further comment? Mary Alice.
Well, I think Jaya summarized very eloquently my thoughts on this. I spent a couple of hours today trying to read into the Illinois State Code on townships to try and really hone in on what this does, and I'm quite confused. So if I'm confused and I've spent some time, I don't know how much time electorates would have to go through, and I think having something clear, I'm not against the, the process, but I, I just want to make sure that it's very clear and understandable to people who would be voting on it.
Any other comments? All right, we need to take a voice vote on, well, let's take a roll call vote on this amendment to remove this item from the annual town board agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Wu?
Yes.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Cola Setti?
Yes.
Trustee Bishop?
No.
Trustee Wilkin?
No.
The motion passes, three to two. Now we'll go to the original motion to approve the agenda of the annual township board meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, minus the resolution. Could we have a roll? Is there discussion on that one? Chandra.
So what's the process of adding things to the, to the annual meeting agenda then? So like, maybe not just this resolution, but anything else that may come up between now and the next 15 days or whenever this is?
So after the town board approves the annual town agenda, no changes can be made so that it can be advertised, so that the electorate can be duly informed of what the business will be, but the process for items appearing on the annual agenda, I'm not going to provide the number because I don't have it fresh in my head, but there is a certain percentage of the electorate that may sign a...